Call the meeting to order, roll call please.
Mayor Rankin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Selaya.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Montano.
Here.
Councilmember Walter.
Here.
Councilmember Woolridge.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Lisa. Valerie, would you leave this invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance, please?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for your protection, for your guidance and your leadership. Help us to do those things that will be beneficial to all people. Father, we thank you for your protection. We thank you, Lord, for all things. Be with us in this meeting that we make decisions that are right for the town of Florence. Just go with us and stand by us. Thank you for all things in Jesus.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. This is the first call to the public for public comment on issue within jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or it may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take any action on any manner during an open call to the public unless matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. I have three slips here. I would ask everyone, when I call your name, to come forward to the podium in the center and speak loud or close to the mic. We've had some complaints of people can't hearing, so everybody would just step up to the mic, please. Jerry Raybert?
Can you hear me okay?
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. My name is Jerry Raybert. My wife and I have lived in the historic district for 30 years in the J.B. Michae House and Lone Star Store on the corner of Ruggles and Church. I am retired, having worked for Arizona State Parks for 34 years. Three of the six parks I manage are historic buildings, one of them being McFarlane State Park. I want to introduce myself to the new members of the council because I also have an interest in seeing our town prosper. For too long, I have sat on the sideline and have not agreed with the direction the town is headed. I hope I am not the only person with these concerns. Let us start by agreeing that we want to preserve our historic district, protect our environment, and provide a safe place for people to live. The preservation of our historic Main Street and the district are going to bring visitors to our town. Keeping our surrounding deserts free of development should be a priority in a world plagued with overpopulation and dwindling resources. Who says we need to contribute to the gross expansion of Phoenix south to meet Tucson or the destruction of our natural world and depletion of the water table? Today, we need to maintain as much natural world as we can to offset the effects of global warming, whether it's man-made or naturally occurring. We should invest in something positive to bring visitors to town. I don't think large government buildings within the historic district or curb bump outs and fake patterns on Main Street add anything to visitors' experiences. Businesses, guided tours, campgrounds, and hiking trails are excellent ways to bring and keep visitors in town. Whether you like it or not, the Florence Copper Project is going to test its new and innovative method of mining, at least on a limited basis. If there is no fracking and tests show there are no ill effects on water quality, Florence may serve as a shining example for the future of mining. And who knows? This may also attract visitors to tour the site and our town. The council is ready to spend money on useless treatments on Main Street and fight an industry which could benefit the future of our town. Why would you even suggest tearing down the Cune Building because it might cost money to preserve it? Katie Montano once said, "It might be a small insignificant building, but we are not getting anymore." Aren't there enough parks areas on Main Street? The IDA is willing to give $4,000 to preserve the Cune Building. Why not match that and simply protect the building? I don't think enough time was spent to obtain donations, grants, or a buyer. Think of where the Florence Hotel and the Clark House would be if we just threw up our hands and said it costs too much. Ever heard of private-public partnerships? As if there are not enough empty buildings on Main Street, why would anybody consider expanding the business district to Bailey? We should be working to get businesses on Main Street, not expanding our troubled business district. Our time is limited tonight, and I thank the council for letting me speak. I don't like to attend meetings, but I'm willing to discuss these points and other ideas at a later date. For some things, it's already too late. We do have a future, and it can be bright. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruth Harrison?
Mayor, council, and ladies and gentlemen, a letter to the editor that I wrote appeared last week in the local newspaper. It went something like this. "The town library will soon close its doors and leave its present location at the high school. Many local residents want the town to build a new library on the site of the burned-out county elections warehouse on Main Street." Let's face it, downtown Main Street is no place for a warehouse, or any kind of big government building for that matter. A new community library on Main Street would enliven downtown Florence by attracting a lot of foot traffic. During the month of December, 7,462 people walked through the library doors. 7,462 people. Folks could visit the new library and walk to a nearby eatery or get a haircut, pick up mail at the post office, or stop by the Future Pitya Park across the street. Kids could easily ride their bikes to the library, too. That's what we want, right? We want to attract people to Main Street, and we'd like them to stay awhile. We want downtown Florence to come back to life. A library on the corner of Main and Sixth is a great way to make that happen. So let's do it. Let's add life to downtown Florence. Let's build a new library on Main Street. We can do it. Where there's a will, there's a way. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin Christensen?
Thank you for your time. As a community member of Santan Valley and a customer of Johnson Utilities, it is with great interest-
Can you speak into the mic just a little bit closer, please?
I need a taller mic is what I need. Thank you. As a community member of Santan Valley and a customer of Johnson Utilities, it is with great interest I stand here today to ask some pertinent questions in which I believe many in our community would like answered. In light of the potential purchase of Johnson Utilities, these questions are sincere and ones to which you should be able to answer today. So please allow me the time to read through them all and then consider your answers in response once I have completed. Number one, what type of customer service can we expect to receive from your call center agents? Will current Johnson Utilities employees be retained? Will they be considered Town of Florence employees and go through the process identified on your employee website? Will qualified field technicians be required to maintain their certification and work only in the areas where their certifications are applicable? What training will customer service representatives also receive? Will they be expected to be helpful and courteous in their interactions with customers? Will calls regarding billing errors and other questions be handled with utmost professionalism and respect? How will the Town of Florence communicate with us about infrastructure problems, such as utility system pipe breaks, environmental concerns, and water quality? Will we receive notification within 24 hours of the potential violation or system problem? How will we be assured of the overall water quality in our service area? How will the Town of Florence address smells that frequently come from existing sewage plants? And who do we contact to report such smells? If any type of inserts, bulletins, or newsletters are included in your water bills? Will any inserts included share useful information about water conservation methods, issues involving water replenishment, recycling, or other environmental concerns? Or can we expect to see these inserts used to make politically charged statements or controversial assertions about various individuals or groups in our community? For those of us in the unincorporated areas of Penale County, what resources are available if we're not satisfied with the service provided to us by the Town of Florence? We are aware, as for the water quality issues, ADEQ would be a contact. However, just as in private utilities where the Arizona Corporation Commission reigns, who does the town answer to specifically as a next step? We want you to be aware that we will hold you accountable as well. And you know the experience and you know the history that our community has gone through. So we're trusting you in this, and we're backing you in it, as long as you give us the assurance that you're going to treat us with the utmost respect and give us the answers when we need them. We thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other member of the public? Here now, I'll close, calling the public, Lisa.
Item six, public hearings and presentations. Presentation of a service award to Cynthia Clark for 15 years of dedicated service to the Town of Florence. Mrs. Clark was unable to attend today, and her award will be given at the Public Works area when she's available. Next item is item B, presentation by the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce recognizing the business of the month.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Florence Reminder and Blade Tribune and its predecessors have been serving Florence since 1892. The paper is part of Casa Grande Valley Newspaper, Inc., and it actively promotes and celebrates Florence's incredible history. Approximately 20 years ago, the company committed to saving and restoring the landmark William Clark House in the downtown historic district. After several years of effort, this historic building at 190 North Main Street reopened 11 years ago this month as the Florence Reminder office. The staff at the Florence Reminder are your neighbors here in town. Reporter Daniel Doolam has been with the company for seven years. Mark Howling has been your local editor for 17 years. Office manager Joe Tina McCann, who was born and raised in Florence, has been with the company for 18 years. It is our honor at the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce to present our February Business of the Month to the Florence Reminder.
It's beautiful. Thank you very much. Mark, where's your camera?
It's here.
Why don't you get somebody that knows how to operate? I'd like to have a picture of that.
Okay.
Get somebody who knows how to operate his camera. But Tina, I think, can.
Yeah, but Tina can.
You're not getting off that easy. You've got to get your mug and the paper, too.
Oh, my, yeah. This is my smile.
That one didn't go.
We appreciate this recognition from the chamber very much. We enjoy being members of the chamber. We enjoy serving the town of Florence, the people of Florence. Florence is a great community. I just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you, and keep up the good work.
Item C, public hearing on an application received from Robert E. Barker Valentino's located at 3385 North Hunt Highway, Florence, Arizona, for a new Series 12 restaurant license and for council recommendation for approval or disapproval of said license. The town clerk's office did receive an application from Mr. Parker on January 28th. The said application was posted. We let the application remain posted for 20 days. During that time, we received no complaints regarding the application. We did contact the owner and asked them to be present at tonight's hearing. They were unable to make it, but do hope that council forwards a favorable recommendation to the Department of Liquor License and Control. This is the location of the former Mama's Restaurant. That's located in Anthem Plaza. Does council have any questions?
Any member of the council have any question, Lisa? This time, I'll open the public hearing on Valentinos on Hunt Highway. Does any member of the audience have any questions or any comment on the issuing of the liquor license to Valentinos? CNN will close call to, or close the public hearing. Lisa, is this for approval tonight?
It's for approval, sir.
Do we need a motion?
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion. We recommend, or we accept the, or send to the state liquor department for a Series 12 restaurant license for Valentino's on 3385 North Hunt Highway.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to recommend to the Arizona Department of Liquor Control the approval for Robert E. Baker Valentino's restaurant in Anthem. Any other discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item seven, consent agenda. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled as a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public accepts that the item is called. Item A, approval of a special event liquor license for Penale County Mounted Posse Annual Eddie Martinez Benefit on Saturday, March 29, 2014, from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Item B, approval of a special event liquor license for Pedilian Sports Outreach Anthem Spring Festival on Saturday, March 8, 2014, from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Item C, the reappointment of Judy Hughes, Barbara Kelly, and Ty, Ty to the Industrial Development Authority with the terms to expire December 31, 2019. Item D, appointment of Donald Woolridge to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board with the term to expire of December 31, 2016. Item E, reappointment of Denise Colart to the Library Advisory Board with the term to expire December 31, 2015. And item F, approval of accepting the register of demand ending December 31, 2013, in the amount of $2,201,094.82. Mayor, member, council, that's your consent agenda.
Does any member of the council like anything they've taken off the consent agenda? Does any member of the public have anything they'd like to take off the consent agenda? CNN, we need a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as written. Any other discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item eight, new business. Eight A, discussion approval/disapproval of entering into a purchase agreement with Penale County Federal Credit Union to purchase property located at 200 West 20th Street, Florence, Arizona, in an amount not to exceed $335,000 or $72.54 per square foot of building. Mayor, members of council, as you're aware, town staff received authorization to enter into a purchasing agreement with Penale County Federal Credit Union. We're bringing it back to you at this time. The property is located at 200 West 20th Street, Florence, Arizona. The building is approximately 4,618 square feet, and it has approximately eight executive offices, one conference room, a work area, break area, two restrooms, and the outside has 12 covered parking lot spaces and 20 open spaces. The building is approximately 25 years old. Staff is making a recommendation that the Town of Florence purchase this building. The credit union is currently under contract to go to a new location. The building does allow for them to make, the contract doesn't allow for them to make the modifications to that building, and we would take over control of that building July 1 to August 30, 2014. This allocation of this cost will be included in next fiscal year's budget, not this fiscal year.
Remember, the council have any questions, or Lisa or staff? I think my questions were answered today when I talked to the manager about clients having to come back between Town Hall and the zoning department, if we were to put it in down there, to make deposits of cash or to pay for their permits and everything. And I was told that that will be straightened out, that they won't have to run back and forth to make it more complicated for them. I think that was one of my main concerns I had on that. Another question for you, Charles. We're planning on building a new building down by Town Hall here, just to the west. What are you planning on putting in that?
Mayor, council, that may be, let me answer that a little bit longer of an answer than you might have planned, but since the Clerk and Recorder Building burned down, you all may remember last year at this point in time, the town approached the county in purchasing that area, yet the county was not interested at that time. About a month and a half ago, as this, or a couple months ago, as the library IGA came to fruition that it was going to be ending here soon, we started looking at potentially putting the library here with some recreational offices for additional programming that we can't offer right now because we own the space, and potentially an aquatic center with a swimming pool and those type of areas. So what we're kind of looking at now, the county has come back to us and has entered into conversations with us to look at potentially now purchasing that area or maybe doing a land swap with that area of the old Clerk and Recorder's office. So we're currently engaged in that conversation. So if that does occur, we'll bring that back to council for consideration, and then on this site, we will look at definitely recreational offices and an aquatic center.
Thank you. Any other? Need a motion?
I make a motion to approve an entering into a purchase agreement with Penale County Federal Credit Union to purchase property located at 200 West 20th Street in the amount not to exceed $335,000.
Second the motion. We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with Penale County Federal Credit Union for the purchase of their building not to exceed $335,000. Any other discussion? And again, this will be budgeted for next fiscal year.
I did have one question before.
Okay.
Is 72.54 per square foot, is that the average price for a commercial building?
Councilmember Hawkins, council, that is the current price being offered by the Penale County Federal Credit Union regarding the place where they're at because there is commercial and residential property. We did not measure that against other areas, but that was the lowest offer that they were willing to accept.
Okay. Yeah, it was interesting to see that the, all the evaluations were done out of Casa Grande comparing Florence against Casa Grande on the comps. Any other discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item B, discussion approval/disapproval of entering into an IGA, intergovernmental agreement with the library between the Town of Florence and Florence Unified School District. Jasper Holt. For those of you who don't know, this is Jasper's first time of presenting before you. He is our town librarian.
Thank you, Mayor Rankin, members of council. I'm here to discuss a new, shorter-term intergovernmental library agreement between the Town of Florence and the Florence Unified School District. The previous IGA with the school district, they elected not to renew it. The agreement under discussion this evening will allow the library to remain in its current location with the school for the next 15 months, up to May 31, 2015, by which time it's projected that we'll have a new library facility completed and ready for move-in. So this would enable us to remain in our current location, and the town would be able to continue to offer library services to the public during the interim period, creating a seamless transition between the current facility and the new facility as possible. In terms of the new agreement, we would continue to act as a joint-use facility during this interim period, serving both the public and the Florence High School. We would now be leasing the facility of the high school for a total of $25,000, which will be payable over the 15-month period in five installments of $5,000. And we would also agree, under the new agreement, if the new library facility was ready early before May 2015, at whatever date the new facility is ready, we would agree to vacate the current one and move to the new one at that time, with no penalty for moving out early. This agreement does enable us to continue to provide library services to the public with as little interruption as possible, and staff does recommend the town enter into this new agreement. Thank you.
Did Mark teach you how to make a presentation to the council?
Former high school teacher, so I have a little bit of experience.
Mark's not here tonight. I shouldn't have said that because I, okay, thank you. Any questions, librarian? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good presentation, Jasper.
Thank you.
Need a motion?
I make a motion that we enter into an IGA with the Florence Unified School District for use of the library.
We have a motion and a second to enter the intergovernmental agreement with the Florence Unified School District regarding the library. Any other discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item C, resolution number 1421-14, discussion approval/disapproval of adopting a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, ordering and calling a special election to be held on May 20, 2014, in and for the Town of Florence, Arizona, to submit to the qualified electors of the town the question of acquisition of the water and wastewater utilities owned by Johnson Utilities LLC and Southwest Environmental Utilities LLC. Mayor, members of council, as a requirement of Arizona state law, towns are required to submit to the authorization to the voters before construction, purchase, acquisition, or lease of any plant or property of a public utility. The Town of Florence has contacted the Penale County Elections Department, and we have determined that the Town of Florence can do an election on May 20 if the council so calls the election. This is to place this particular question before the voters, not to determine if the Town of Florence is going to purchase or not purchase, but to place the question to the voters if the voters wish for the Town of Florence to purchase. And the resolution will authorize the town clerk to take all actions necessary to facilitate the election.
Any member of the council have any question, Lisa, or staff? None, we're going to have a roll call vote, please. We need a motion first, though.
I make a motion to approve resolution number 1421-14, calling for a special election.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 1421-14, calling for a special election on purchase of Johnson Utilities and Southwest Environmental Utilities. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montano?
Yes.
Councilmember Walter?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolridge?
Aye.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Selaya?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Rankin?
We have a quorum, aye.
Motion is unanimous.
Jordy, thank you. Now, that means I've got to stay here tonight and sign a whole bunch of papers, right?
Right. Item D, discussion approval/disapproval of authorization to enter into a governmental agreement for provisions of service with Penale County Recorder for election and voter registration services. The Town of Florence has talked to the Penale County Voter Registration. They are willing to allow us to do a election. Usually typically, cities have to call an election 120 days prior to. Today is actually the 91st day prior to this election. So we will be doing an election. It will be a ground election that will be happening at the Town of Florence. We will have one polling site. Anyone who is set up for permanent early-b Anyone who is set up for permanent early ballots will receive their permanent early ballots. We do have 52% of our voters receive early ballots. So, basically, we'll be doing half the election by mail, half the election in public, but it will be at Town Hall. Town of Florence is set up to where in town elections, there is one polling space within the town limits, and that is at Town Hall.
Any questions, Lisa? Hearing none, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement for election and voter registration services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to intergovernmental agreement with Penal County Recorder for election and voter registration services. Again, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Montagna?
Yes.
Councilmember Walter?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolridge?
Aye.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Selaya?
Aye.
Council Vice Mayor Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Rankin?
Aye.
Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you. This is the second call of the public. The same comments made earlier are in place again. Get close to the mic. We're going to get a longer mic next for the next meeting.
Denise Colart, A.D.O., McFarland Boulevard. I just want to thank you for my reappointment to the library board. I enjoy serving, and I'm looking forward to our new library. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the audience? Hearing none, I'll call the public, call the council, Tara.
We have a lot of exciting things going on within the Town of Florence, especially through our Parks and Rec Department. We have the real kids' fishing derby coming up the first week of March. And also, just to plan and prepare and look forward, we have the Town Trash Pickup Day on March 15. So, look out and get to dump all those things you otherwise cannot.
Thank you. Bill?
No, I was just going to say the same thing about the Free Cleanup Day. Everybody take advantage of it.
Valerie? Tommy?
Just want to acknowledge all of our board and commission members who volunteer and, you know, put forth the effort to contribute as much time as they can rather than hang out and toss tomatoes at us. So, hats off to you guys.
Really?
Yes, I'd like to acknowledge the Florence High School basketball team that'll be starting their playoffs this week.
Tom?
I'd like to thank all those that were involved in our home tour because, ladies and gentlemen, it was spectacular. It went over perfect, and all of you had a lot to do with it. I had spoken before to Gilbert and also to Ray. And one person I had to talk to, and that's our Public Works Department. I want to thank you guys very much because you shut down the work on Main Street so we could have a nice home tour. I want to thank you all, all that's had anything to do with it. Thank you very much.
I'd like to echo Tommy's word to the people that volunteer their services towards the boards and commission for Florence. Lisa has to go out and almost pull teeth to get people to volunteer. The council listens to the boards and reads the reports from the committees, and we would like to have more participation so that people don't have to, time after time after time, apply if they don't want to. But they do it out of the goodness of their heart and goodness of the love of the community by providing their time to keep the boards and commission going. Again, I thank all those of you that are here tonight. Sometimes you don't think we appreciate you, but we do. Sometimes we listen to you, sometimes we don't. But we do appreciate your input. And also, the town council in taking the appropriate steps in evaluation of the acquisition of Johnson Utilities. This resolution prepares the town council to ask the general public permission to purchase the utility once the evaluation is completed. At the time, the information the council reviewing to make a decision to move forward will be available to the public. In the long run, I believe that the acquisition will lay the groundwork for the Town of Florence and create a strong growth and economic future. I want to thank the town staff for the work currently underway. And I want to thank the county recorder for assisting us in planning for a May election, even after the fire that occurred a few weeks ago that destroyed the voting equipment. Everybody working together will get this done, if it's to be done. And when the information that we have becomes public information, we will be getting it out to the public. We're not going to do anything until that time. I am finished reading the motion. Bill?
There's just one more thing, I'm sorry. But the gentleman that spoke earlier about the Kuhn Building and the crosswalks and all that, there was also another letter to the editor in the paper last week from another gentleman that thought we should have used the money from the crosswalks on the Kuhn Building. That Main Street beautification program's been going on. Well, we've been trying to get it done for like five or six years. And A.D.O. kept holding us up and changing the rules. That wasn't something that we just did. It's been in the works for quite some time. And on the Kuhn Building, it's just, for such a small building, to make it worthwhile to spend the money that it would take is just cost prohibitive. And another thing, we tried to get donations from the private sector. It didn't work. And we're on a timeframe as far as safety because anybody that walks down there and looks at it, those walls are separated and it's ready to collapse. So, it's just, it's a matter of public safety at this point. And I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thanks.
I'm sorry, I didn't say it earlier, but whatever.
No problem. Okay, need a motion?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All the papers, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.